Buddy, we are going to begin. Nicholas will explain our Spanish language interpretation services for those who prefer to participate and listen in Spanish. So Nicholas, if you please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Esta reunión será interpretada al español. Para acceder a la reunión, a la interpretación en español, usted tiene que buscar en la parte de abajo de su aparato una barra donde aparecerá un globo o mundo. Tiene que hacer clic ahí y le va a aparecer un menú. En el menú tiene que buscar lenguajes o interpretación y escoger allí español. Y entonces usted va a escuchar toda la reunión en español. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Gernan.
Thank you, Nicholas, and a warm welcome to Clara Garzón. So one of our interpreters this evening. Thank you for being here with us. So welcome, everybody, to our second study building, to our second building electrification ordinance study session. And just a little information on our process this evening. You have your roll call. We'll have a staff report, then a bit of a discussion, a short, somewhat short discussion, structured discussion among council members. And then we'll have public comment. So there will actually be more focused comments on some of the pieces of what we're talking about this evening, and I'll explain that again in a bit. So why don't we start with a roll call, please?
Councilmember Jimenez.
Here.
Councilmember Penrose.
Here.
Councilmember Rorback.
Here.
Vice Mayor Reddick.
Here.
Mayor Brownstone.
Here.
Do you have a corn?
Thank you. So we will begin with a staff report. And then we'll move on to our process.
Great, thank you. Let me just share my screen here. All right. Can everybody see that? Yes. Great. Okay. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Veronica Bostonak. I'm a sustainability analyst, and I'm here to conduct our second, our follow-up building electrification study session. My presentation to you all will be really quick, just a quick overview of what we talked about last time, what's brought us here today. Last year, we started working on our climate action adaptation plan. We had our very first study session on this topic in February. Work Council gave staff direction to prepare a draft ordinance, which we published on April 22nd, and conduct public outreach, which was done in June through September this year. That led us to our first follow-up study session two weeks ago on September 31st. We ran out of time at that study session, so we're here to continue the discussion today. If all goes well, we anticipate that the ordinance will be introduced on November 16th with an effective date of January 2022. Again, quick overview, the draft ordinance that we prepared would call for-
Veronica, are you advancing your slides?
I am, yes.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not seeing them advance.
Okay.
Let's start over.
Let's see, I will stop and get back.
We've lost the-
Just have to share again. There we go. Looking good.
Okay.
How about this?
Looks good.
That looks good? Okay. So this was the slide that I just went over. Next, a quick overview of the draft ordinance. The draft ordinance as of yet, as of right now, would call for all-electric new construction, both residential and commercial, would require- It's, was it still showing?
Let's just-
I think we're seeing the right slide now.
Okay, but it's in presenter view.
You're seeing the whole presenter view, so. Not that it's a huge issue.
Yeah, I mean-
Nothing's a secret.
Oh, well, yeah. You get to see my notes, which may be outdated. Anyways, it would require that any conversion of a current gas appliance be replaced with an electric alternative at the time of replacement. With bringing us to January 2045, where all gas lines would be kept or decommissioned. There's also some expanded requirements for electric vehicle charging and solar panels. And there are some exceptions. This ordinance would not regulate small portable propane tanks, like what you would see on grills or patio heaters. Emergency generators would still be allowed, and the only exception would be for technical or physical inefficability. So as of right now, the exception would be pretty limited. Looking at the greenhouse gas emission projections for this ordinance as written, I have on the screen our energy, our projected energy emissions for 2030 as if we did nothing, and then as if we had the ordinance as written. By 2030, if this ordinance was adopted in 2022, we would expect to see about a 16% reduction in these emissions. But that percentage would continue to go down until 2045, where we would expect these emissions to be effectively zero. So the longer this type of policy be in place, the more effective it would be year by year. And last, the community feedback, I just wanted to put this back up on the screen. There's, this is what we heard during the public comment period, but also what we heard at the study session last time. So if there's any point that the council would like to go into more detail, we're happy to do so, but in the interest of time, I'm just putting this list on here today. So for that, I'm going to pass this back to John Doughty, our Public Works Director, and he's going to go over the process tonight.
Yeah, John, I can, we have that slide, I can talk to that briefly.
And John, the slides are still not advancing, at least for me.
Are they advancing for everybody else?
Nope, it doesn't sound like they are.
No, not yet.
Geez, okay. Well, we were trying to work from a, we were trying, we were trying to work from a laptop.
Yeah, not to worry.
We were trying to work from the laptop, which would make it easier to do the next piece of this, so can you see it now?
Yeah, perfect. Okay, so as I mentioned, we're going to have a process because there's a lot of choices, quite a few choices to be made this evening around the ordinance. And some are probably a bit easier than others. Some involve some choices around dates and et cetera, and start getting a little more granular. So, and we're going to go through a few tables to help us take in all the information and digest it. So what we're going to do is we're going to actually engage in some council member discussion and go through a couple of tables first, where we'll have some yes, maybe, or no decisions. And after we get through the first two tables, I think there will be a lot more for the public to react to. So, you know, spend 20 or 30 minutes on these first two tables, if that long, see how quickly we can move through them. Then we'll stop and take public comments. And then we'll go through the remaining two tables, tables three and four, with just discussion among council. And then again, we'll stop and take public comments again. So I get that all right, Bob?
That sounds good, Mr. Mayor. We'll see how we go, and if we start to run out of time, if it approaches seven o'clock, at that point, you can let the public know that, that if you have to, you'll continue this discussion at your seven o'clock meeting. But the goal would be to try to get done by seven o'clock.
Right. And the goal is to give as clear a direction to staff as possible in drafting the next iteration of the ordinance. That's the outcome we're looking for this evening, so thank you. All right. So.
So, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. Thank you, community. John Doughty. As the mayor indicated, we're hoping to walk you through some decision points tonight. Our objective is to fill in the table real time, so we can start to see what opinion is among the council. We'll give a chance to come back to make sure we've captured the colors right. What I will say is there is absolutely nothing wrong with answering maybe, but obviously, the more maybes, the more challenging it can be, depending on where those maybes fall. But clearly, I think at the point where we're talking at the very beginning, the maybes are perfectly legitimate, because what, what that says to staff is that you're, you're interested, you want to hear more detail, and then you can make some decisions about that after you hear the more granular details, is what Mayor indicated. So that's our hope and moving forward. So why don't you pop up and I'll, table one, I'm going to walk you through all the four tables just briefly, just simply because I don't want there to be confusion about what's next and what's going on. So table one and table two are the ones that we wanted to take first, and they truly are at a very high level of a policy. And I think they're pretty self-explanatory, and I'll stop at that and go on to table two, which really hits into the start of a conversation about are we going to apply this ordinance today or at a future date to, to commercial and residential properties that exist today? And this one would hit first on major remodels, and then whether there's appropriate timing for that. Table three then would hit really the issues of the burnout ordinance conversation we had in February and working through this, which implies that, that in a residential situation, if a gas appliance burned out, they would replace it with electric as one option. So are you not seeing the tables?
Yeah, I was just going to ask you, John, we're not seeing any advancement on the slides. We still just have that.
I want to, wow, okay, I'm sorry.
There we go.
Yeah, we got it now, so.
We're seeing, we're seeing table three.
All right.
Table one.
Now we got table one, table one's up.
So table four, so table four is, table four hits on basically is policy issues with existing commercial. So what we want to, so what, what the previous slide it said is, is that if you stop at a point in tables one and two where you say, we really don't want to apply this at this point, and go forward with an ordinance that applies to either commercial or residential, then obviously, we would not be going through tables three or tables four, depending on which one of those choices. So that's, that's why our recommendation would be to go through tables one and two first, and then have them, and then based on that input, go from there. So let's go back to table one and hope everybody sees it. Everybody see table one?
Thumbs up.
All right. So the first question, we hope and believe is a pretty much a softball, because we felt and heard at February, very little resistance or resistance to the idea that new construction be subject to basically electrification. So a new house, a new detached ADU, those new commercial building, those would all be required to basically be electrified and not have gas connections. So I'll stop at that, that's, that's item six, list, item six there on the, okay. There with that identified, highlighted there. And the idea would be then to proceed with confirming yes, no, or maybe on that aspect.
Okay, so this might be one of the easier ones to start with. Can we can just, I can just start, I'll go from right to left, and starting with council member Rorback. Can you give a clear yes, no, or maybe? If you could just unmute? That's okay.
All right, yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Thank you, councilmember Penrose. Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Roderick?
Yes.
Great. And that's a yes for me. See how easy this is? It's probably the easiest one.
So the next, the next issue comes around the idea of gas service. And in the prior ordinance, there had been discussion around, and it requires the decommissioning of all gas, basically is shutting off gas to, to homes, residences, buildings, businesses, everything by 2045. So do we want to take a run at that one?
And that's for existing buildings?
That applies to everything. There would be no gas service after 2045 in the city of Hatton Bay.
Got it. All right, so let's try this again. Councilmember Rorback?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez?
No.
Okay. Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. So, so I'll say yes on that one.
So the next item would be a little bit deeper dive into that issue, which is that, for example, you have an existing residence that is all-electric at this time. What this question is, is would that person between now and 2045 be able to install a new gas meter, for example, or to install a larger propane tank to serve their home if they wanted to basically have gas appliances? Again, the existing draft ordinance basically says that these would not be allowed to occur, but again, this is a policy question that we, we need clarity on from that perspective. And what that leads to then is below is a timing issue with that. And we can, what I would suggest we do is, is once we have, yet there's a consensus, an agreement on that, then we can talk about whether timing is an applicable piece to this question.
So just for clarity, these are buildings that are currently all-electric?
Correct.
And question is whether or not any of them would like to change over to gas in any way?
And there's a, there's another one arguably there, that if you had a new construction, they were electrified, and then they came back and said, yeah, but I want to put in a gas meter. This would preclude that gas meter from going in as well for a newly constructed all-electric house or business.
Got it.
Seems kind of silly, but that's the possibility, so.
So we'll need to go through each line of this. And there's also, you notice that there's a last-
No, let's, let's just stay with this, what we're asking for right now is the gas meters. I suggest you stay just on the gas meters.
Oh, I'm sorry. You know what, I dropped down. Sorry about that.
All right. I thought you did.
Thank you. All right, let's try this again. Councilmember Rorback? Apologies.
And yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
And I'm a yes on that as well.
Thank you.
All right.
The next issue, the next issue starts to get a little deeper, a little, little more policy issue with that, which really is about existing buildings. We've already covered the issue of applying to new construction. This is where, where as a policy, we're stretching out beyond what a lot of the agencies in the, in the area and the state have done. And this is why there's some details here. What I will say is that there will ultimately be some more details that we can get to in, in the subsequent tables. And beyond that, there will be some additional details that we just can't get to in these tables, but we'll be working on and bringing back to the council as part of the ordinance conversation. So I would first start with the line, item 11, which is just simply is affirming or not whether basically we're going to require some form of electrification requirements for major remodels. And major remodels, what we're suggesting is somewhere between 500 and 750 square foot, either additional area or modification of, of that area within the, within the house as well. But, and that's something we'll ask for clarity as well, if you have thoughts and ideas on that threshold point. But we're suggesting it aligns with a lot of what's there in the, in the LCP and in our zoning ordinance today. I see a hand up, Mayor?
Yeah, councilmember Reddick.
Yeah, like, why not, why not like a percentage, you know, like 50% of an existing structure?
Jill, Jill and I, sorry, Jill and I spoke about this, and, and, and we're looking at one, the LCP, and what provisions are there, and trying to make them consistent with what we're doing and dealing with. But the most, the most convincing argument that I could get to is, is that going with a straight percentage, whether it's 10, 15, 20, or 50%, or whatever the number is, if you've got a thousand-square-foot home versus a 5,000-square-foot home, the implications are very much different for that, and for that individual home, particularly if you take a 10%. That's, you know, 1,000 is 100 square feet, a 5,000, it's 500 square feet, you know, which, you know, it's just a relative terms. And that's why we, we, we pulled back, I pulled back from the recommendation of a percentage, and, and went consistent with what we've sort of been looking at as part of the implementation plans and everything with that. There's nothing that says we can't do it, but that was why there was sort of this equity fairness kind of piece to the, to the percentage piece.
A question, councilmember Rorback?
John, when you talk about electrification requirement, does that mean you do a remodel of a bedroom, and you need then to electrify all the existing gas appliances? Is that what?
We'll get there. We'll, we'll get there, trust me, we'll get there. But the, the, what we're suggesting is just as a major, is a, is a big policy piece of this deal, do you think it makes sense to require in some form or fashion that existing buildings be retrofitted at some point during, in this process? That's really the question that we're asking. And it really involves, you know, and that really gets into the major remodels, but it works its way down into even minor remodels and questions there, too.
Well, if I'm asked my opinion on electrification requirement, I need to know what electrification means in this context.
Well, again, if, you know.
John, let me, John, let me try, try, because I had the same question.
Okay.
So I think in Harvey's example, so, so someone adds 500 square feet, they hit the trigger, but they only put in two bedrooms with, so, so are, are you saying they would only have to electrify those two bedrooms, or does that trigger them to electrify their entire house? I, I think the answer was, our intention was that, that would require them to do their whole house. That's the idea of a major, that's why we call it a major remodel. That would be the trigger point for them to convert 100%. That was my understanding. So I, I hope I'm clarifying your question or point correctly, councilmember, because I had the same.
No, that-
It's an important question.
And that is, and that is that point, but, but the point that we're really getting at, too, is, is that some of those details are going to have to come out of this process and down the road with this on it. It, we, we frankly, the, the, the first question one has to ask is, are we going to apply this ordinance to existing residences, period? That's really what we're asking. Do you want to, do you want to retroactively require some form of electrification work to be done to existing residences?
Okay.
That's really the basic question that we're asking there with that, whether, you know, it's implied because basically you get to the major remodels, which would be the first point that you would think that you would attach it. But, but I would reterm that in the context of, do you want to retroactively require some electrification? And we'll get to the details of what that means. Because it can be one of, really one of two things. It can be that if you're touching gas appliances, you have to replace them with electric. If you're not touching it, you don't have to replace those gas appliances. If you're doing two bedrooms and there's no gas appliances you're touching, you could argue that at 500 square feet, that still doesn't kick it in. That's one way to write the ordinance. The other is, is to say, if you're doing 500 square feet or 750 square feet, that you're going to electrify everything. The current ordinance, the current draft says, if you're doing a major remodel, you have to electrify everything. That's what it currently says on the draft that we have. So this is a step, modifying that would be a step back from- So this is a step, modifying that would be a step back from the existing draft, draft model ordinance we've done.
Got it. Okay, so now we're going back, right, we're back here. And by the way, Harvey, oh, by the way, Harvey, can you just put your hand out just so I'll know who's? Thank you. And Harvey, also thank you for providing an example. I think the more we can provide some examples of what this looks like is right, if you were adding a 500-foot room, and it just has gas now, it might just be a matter of adding a vent to that room from the furnace, right? I mean, whatever that costs is versus the cost of electrifying the whole house. So just to keep the public, also, you know, the examples are good, so thank you for that. Okay, so I'll switch the order now of people voting, to be fair, so no one feels on the spot. Are we doing that first line 11 or just, or going down?
That's what we would like to start with there, and that'll, I think, get things rolling a little bit toward a conversation.
Great. And also, when you use the word before 2045, is that the same thing, just to be sure, saying by 2045? It is, right? But since you changed the word, I just wanted to be sure, I'm missing anything.
Well, actually, if it's not, because
Okay.
because that implies any time between 2040 or 2044, December 31, 2044, backwards to today, or to the effective date of the ordinance. So that was intentional. So if you don't want it until, you know, that, so that's all inclusive up to, to that point, and I, I, I see, I didn't explain it well. Basically, what we first are asking for is, do you want to apply this, do you want to apply electrification requirements to existing commercial and residential before 2045? Period. That's really the easiest answer there. And then we get down below, which is the types of, of timing of those things. So do you, do you push out those times or anything?
Right, in other words, if we all said no on that, we wouldn't go on to the other.
We wouldn't go on. We'd be, we'd be through most of this conversation.
All right. So I will say yes on line 11. And Councilmember Reddick, just going the other direction this time around.
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez.
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose.
Yes.
Councilmember Rambach.
Yes.
All right.
So the next line 12 basically really talks about existing residential buildings. And again, are we looking at an ordinance that applies some requirements and, and retrofit of, of existing homes, existing residential buildings sometime before 2045? And that's, that's the, you know, that's the gist of this question. We'll go down later on, and we'll talk about timing and subsequent tables. But this is just a question of, should we, again, apply these requirements in some form or fashion to existing residential?
And then we'll get into the conversation.
Three a little more.
Right, great. Okay, so again, we'll start on the left with myself. Yes, Councilmember Reddick.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Jimenez.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Penrose.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Rambach.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And the same question, but for commercial. And again, table four has some specific provisions related to some potential exemptions and questions that have come around and deal with that. We can get to those when we get to that point. But this is just a basic policy question of, do, are we looking for some retrofit of existing commercial buildings before 2045?
Okay. And I'll start on the left. I'll say yes.
Yes.
Sorry, Councilmember Jimenez.
No.
Councilmember Penrose.
Yes.
Councilmember Rambach.
Yes.
Okay. And then this is one of those, it was an odd, odd one, we just didn't know where to put it, but we thought this was a pretty basic, pretty big picture issue of issues with the greenhouses. Obviously, the last time around, you heard from, from a few speakers talking about greenhouses and the challenges, I'm saying they're, what they've indicated were their challenges meeting the requirements. So it was our suggestion to, because these didn't fit neatly anywhere, to just bring this up into the major policy question and ask the question of whether the greenhouses should, should have to comply at some time before 2045. And then we can get into, again, the details of timing.
Okay, again, I'll get on the left. I'll say yes. Councilmember Reddick.
This is for exemption or delay, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Penrose. Penrose, I think you're on mute.
I apologize, maybe.
Okay, maybe, thank you. Councilmember Rambach.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay.
All right. So.
Go ahead.
So we, so the question really comes, this is regarding the, the gas meter, you, you've indicated above that the no new gas meters would be allowed. We just want to make sure that we're, that we're clear about the timing of that. Obviously, the, the simplest in terms of just dealing with it is to say it's, it's effective immediately with the ordinance adoption. And that sounded to me like that was kind of a consensus, but again, these are things that, that you can look at. The other thing is, is that you could look at these differently in terms of whether residential or whether commercial with regard to when you perhaps put the timing of the no new gas meters in there. I, and I know some of this, this, these could come into, to a maybes frankly, because of some detail that you may need to have more of with that, we recognize that. But this was just the, the start of that process, that conversation. So the question I'll pose in a, in the most succinct way I can is, are we looking at effective immediately upon a door ordinance adoption for both commercial and residential for the no new meters? Or would we allow some delay in that, depending on the type of whether residential or commercial?
And John, I had a quick question on that. So let's say PG&E, you know, every once in a while, they decide to replace gas meters because they either have a new technology or whatever. Does this say that if they're rolling out some new gas meters, that you couldn't have any new gas meters and everyone all of a sudden have to electrify, period?
We, we would, we would say the, the replacement of an existing meter for maintenance and repair, you know, we'll, we'll have to write those, those definitions and exemptions in there, but exceptions, whatever they may be. But that's not our intention. If, if you have a meter and, and, and it needs to be replaced because of, because of safety reasons or whatever with that deal, I, I, our feeling is those should be allowed to be replaced in that instance. If you're doing it because you want to electrify and you don't really want your gas meter, then you shouldn't be able to get it back. You know, so that's, that's the other scenario that plays out.
Okay, so I guess you really have to be clear what that means in the language of the ordinance. Because the only time.
That's additional work.
If it's a replacement meter, you're fine, only new meters.
New meters is the.
Got it, okay, got it.
New to the home or new to the, to the commercial building. And I saw a couple of hands up, Mayor.
Yep, Councilmember Reddick.
Yeah, so it seems to me you might want to exempt greenhouses here, you know, being that if they wanted to add new greenhouses to an existing site, you know, serve with gas service and might need a new meter, I don't know, I don't know how that works exactly, but we might want to consider that. And if we're, if we're talking about, you know, growing food, you know, or supporting commercial horticulture, which currently needs gas for a variety of reasons, we want to exempt greenhouses here as well.
I think the question, the question that we have in terms of, is it an outright exemption through 2045? Or is it a delay in the, in, in electrifying for a period of time? That, I think, is a policy question that we'd love to hear some input on with that. I'm sure that also the greenhouse folks would like that, too. Don't, you know, and it doesn't have to have an answer absolute, but, but it does help us know how to start to work on redrafting the ordinance with some clarity on that.
Got it. Okay. So we'll start with the, are we, any other questions before we start voting on that? Okay. So we'll start with line 16 before we get into the granular, more granular questions, right? So effective immediately with ordinance adoption. I'll say maybe. Councilmember Reddick.
I'm a maybe until we sort out the next two.
Okay, that's right, yeah, okay. Councilmember Jimenez.
Oh.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Penrose.
I'm a maybe.
Thank you. Councilmember Rambach.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. Go ahead.
So, so 17 obviously is, and those numbers, those dates are, are somewhat arbitrary, but they do align with, with certain aspects, but they are just sort of simple dates and could be anything that you wish to within reason. But they seem like logical places to at least suggest the, the point there. So this comes back to the point is, if we do not want to allow any new gas meters, period, then, and there, you know, then the question is, is there a wish to delay that absolute until 2025? Again, I'm not, you know, this is one that I'm not sure is that big. I'm not sure this is a critical answer, you know, a critical question at this point with this, kind of looking at it and thinking through it and dealing with it. But there, if there is a desire to delay that in any way, then, then that would be good to know now, otherwise.
So on this next line, are we saying yes, maybe, no, or are we indicating?
We, what we would like is a yes, maybe, no. And if you have a particular date that you're thinking about delaying to, if you'll say it, we'll write it and we can at least start to see whether there's consensus on, on a date and everything. And I think Councilmember Penrose.
Yeah, I was just going to call on Councilmember.
Oh, thank you, sorry.
That's okay, please unmute.
Yeah, my question is, if I feel that for residential use, I would like it effective immediately, but I would like to delay it, or maybe, may like to delay, I'd have to learn more about that for commercial. I don't know how to vote on this.
So we can, we can take your, we, we, we can, if you just, if you just say, say that when you're going with the residential.
Okay, where I'm going with the residential is I think it should be effective immediately.
And you'll say no, and you'll say no on delaying, basically.
I'll say no on delaying, right.
Okay. And, and we'll note that. And conceivably, then you would say, yeah, then you would say delay on commercial and you'd tell us what day, what date you would consider.
No, on, on commercial, I'd say maybe, I haven't.
Okay.
I don't have enough information.
Okay.
So it'd be yellow, yeah, thank you.
All right. Well, I'll go to the right and then I'll go to the left. Councilmember Rambach. On line 17 first.
Since I obviously wanted to immediately say no new meters on whatever you have to fill in there.
Okay, great.
No delay is what you're saying? No. Okay.
Councilmember Jimenez, you also had a question.
I have a question. What is the, the durability, durability of a, a gas appliance? Let's say a water heater.
It, it varies a little bit, but you're really stretching it seven to 10 years is, is fairly typical. Veronica, did you have another?
Well, just right now, we're, we're talking about adding new gas meters, so this would be
Later on.
Creating a, adding a gas line to an all-electric building. That's what we're talking about in this line. But to answer your question, yes, water heaters last about eight to 10 years.
Yeah.
So we, on this line, we are talking about the new.
No, new gas meters. We'll get down.
Not the appliance, not the appliance.
Water heater itself, right? We, we will get to your appliance question, though, not long from now.
Okay, so we have to give you a date, either 2020, 2025 or 20, is that what it is?
If you want to delay, if you, now, if you want to delay the effective date of those, of those deals, then we would appreciate that date, you know, you're, it's a, you're, you know, obviously, it's a policy call on this issue.
So we'll say.
This is about no new gas meters.
No new gas meters.
Yeah.
Okay, so with the residential, immediately and a commercial delay.
Okay. And did you have a suggested date in mind for that?
For the residential, 2025?
Wait, you said immediately on.
Immediately.
And commercial.
2025, no, commercial. Wait. I'm a, okay, so residential is immediately and a commercial.
No, you didn't say that. You didn't say that.
You know, I think, you know what? I'm a little confused with what a yes and a no vote means here. It seems a little ambiguous. So back to Councilmember Rambach, it says, the timing of no.
You know, I'm gonna, can I, can I, can I suggest something?
Yeah.
In retrospect, I don't know what we were asking on this question, frankly, at this point. I, I, I really what we were, really what we were envisioning was if you, if there was a split on the issue of gas meters and the extension, and we had a difference of opinion, this was a great place to go to talk about it and whether we had a disagreement about commercial or residential. Honestly, we really don't have a huge split on the issue. But, but, but here's the best I could give you is, if you think we should delay on the requirements for not allowing a new gas meter, then, then for commercial, then let's, you know, speak now or, 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 or speak the next time we, we come up with the item. But it would be helpful to know, you know? And I know the reason why people, the reason we split this out was because I think a lot of people had concerns about whether a new, a new, a, a new tenant, a new restaurant wants to come into a tenant improvement site that did not have gas and did not have gas service, had not been a previously a restaurant, would they be allowed to connect in and put gas appliances in as a commercial use, as a commercial restaurant at that point? That's what we were trying to get at, and I apologize, I just didn't, I just didn't say, I just, I didn't set the table well on this one, so I apologize.
Okay, so in that case, for commercial, make it a, for me, 2030.
Okay.
Councilmember Reddick, can you have a question, too? Where's your hand? It's still up here.
I'm trying to get at line 17, you know, residential. So, so what you're trying to get at, so I have an all-electric house now, I'm not off the grid, but I have an all-electric house. So if we set effective immediately, I could not add a gas line in my house.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So I'm immediately for a residential.
Okay.
And generally for businesses, I would say 2025, but I would give greenhouses to 2030.
Okay. Okay.
Now, again, just a question, assuming, let's say we put in 2025, I'm assuming that 2025 rolls around. twenty twenty-five rolls around, whoever is on council. And depending on situations, may or may, may or may not decide to extend. Is that correct? Any council can always revisit.
Any council can re, can can revisit this and and could change the parameters, can change the dates. Change the applicability, everything with this.
Got it. So I would vote to delay on both till twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
Because I feel like there's more that I don't know about the implications, so might a little more time on both those.
Okay, and John, this is one where we're, we're gonna circle back to all the graphs, but this is one where we can hit this one last. I think there'll be more clarity on this question after we go through all the details. So maybe we don't, we just leave this one hanging for now and we'll certainly come back and clarify this one to make sure we got it right.
Yes, and I apologize, it's a little tedious, I know, but this is, but this is really helpful process to, for us to, to, to start to dig through it. And I agree, Bob, that this, some of this will get more detailed out and we'll return back. And obviously, we're not filling in any consensus because there is none, but there's starting to be something showing here with that. But we'll come back and talk about that. So let's go to table two, and I think this one is, at least it's shorter and I think at least more more straightforward in terms of some of the issues. Obviously, this is starting to dig down a little deeper, which is talking about major remodels. Now, the, the, the council said in the prior table one, that yes, we want to look at the supplying to existing residential. So the first question we have is, is does, you know, do we apply to major remodels? I think we heard a consensus of yes. But obviously, there's some details and questions about, Councilmember Roderick indicated the question about percentage. I don't know if we want to go back and and talk about that anymore, or whether the answer was sufficient there. We could certainly go back to a percentage. We were just wanting to make sure there was clarity and definition of what we were looking at for a major remodel. And the ideas and thoughts about that, and then we can.
And John, John, if I may, I think this is the one where it gets to Councilmember Rarback's question. So we're going back to his example. This is the question where you do it, as I read this, if you do a remodel somewhere between five and seven hundred and fifty square feet, if you hit that trigger, you, you would have to electrify your entire house. Is that what this question says?
So, yes, so here's.
Okay, so that was Councilmember Rarback's question. You'd have to electrify the entire house on this next question.
So let me skip to to table three for one second, and I think this will help maybe clarify. When we were talking about minor remodels, we were also questioning the issue of, should you do full electrification, including the appliances? Or pre-wire only? A lot of the ordinances out there require you to pre-wire. That if you're not touching gas appliances, you're not really dealing with that. They don't require you to remove them, but they require you to pre-wire for a future electrification. And that really going back to table two is probably the my, the major, the major questions and really the options of, of applying the major remodel is. Is really is if you're not touching gas systems, should you have to remove them and replace them with electric? Or do you just basically make sure you pre-wire all of those system areas for a future of electrification at some other point? Those are really the two options that come around. So for us, the first question falls into. Do we, are we looking to somehow get to electrification via major remodels? And then we can get to the detail of what a major remodel is and what a major remodel might do in terms of full electrification or something less than that.
And John, two quick questions. A rew, just a rewiring, okay? Which is the first possibility, right? Just rewiring. Would that generally include a replacement of a panel?
It could, or it, it, but it doesn't have to, um, you know.
I guess, yeah, depending on the age of the building, but.
Age of the building.
More often than not, to keep up with code, I would think that would happen a fair amount of the time. My second quick question, can you remember from staff report from last time, how much is a rewiring, again, range, including a panel? How much does that cost?
A panel, a panel upgrade is going to be anywhere from four to six thousand dollars. And then the actual work behind the walls is going to be dependent on how simple or to bolted is to get that wiring there. If they need to add extra two twenty for a furnace, et cetera. So we didn't have the cost to replace. The cost to electrify in our cost estimate included the difference in cost for the electric appliance and the work behind the walls. We didn't necessarily isolate just.
Just the wiring and the panel, right.
Correct. The panel's about four to six thousand dollars.
I, I'd call it, I'd call the total ten thousand dollars is a good place to start in terms of just a range of costs that I think is a reasonable number to to land on for that purpose.
Okay, so that's a question, so that's that. And then there's a question of where that trigger point might come at five hundred square feet? Or seven fifty perhaps? So, great. Councilmember Rarback, yeah?
Get back to my original question. It's whatever we decide is a major remodel.
Yeah.
At that point, would this ordinance require that the gas lines be capped?
And at a table point that talks about that thing?
Sorry. Um, that is, that is a question that still is in the details. You can only imagine that we would have been at about eight, eight different tables, and I don't think you could bear through that process to get to all of the levels of detail that get to this point. But that's certainly one of those things that could come. And the existing drafted ordinance, basically, in essence, you, you would have to, when you did a major remodel, you would have to eliminate your gas. And, and obviously, that would have been an obvious point to say, you know, you're gonna remove your, your meter. So that's, that's the possibility that comes with that, that they cap and and go with there. If you take that step of saying you're gonna fully electrify. Now, one of the questions that's going to be posed, I'm sure by some in the community, and I argue the point a little bit. Is that while you electrify, some people still like to have a natural gas generator, a whole-house generator put in that needs to have that natural gas. That is probably the most efficient generator, if you're gonna have a backup generator that there is other than battery backup, if you've got full PV available. But let's just say in that realm, it's probably the cleanest burning. And so that would preclude someone from putting in, and they would have to then go with something else, which could be a gasoline or, you know, propane operated generator. Or it could be backup batteries because they also have PV in. But that's the reason why, you know, that was an area where we were not absolutely sure where to go with, frankly, its staff because of the issue of generators.
Got it. Thank you. Councilmember Roderick, did you have your hand up for a clarification question?
I just want to sort of talk about scale a little bit. So in, in a home, two hundred square feet is a pretty big bedroom. So if you're talking about five hundred to seven hundred and fifty square feet, you know, that's a, that's a fairly, you know, big chunk of a house, I think. It's probably two to three bedrooms, you know, or, you know, a couple bedrooms and a bath, maybe a master bath and a you know, bedroom. So, um, I, I just wanted to, want us to just realize what, what five hundred and seven hundred and fifty square feet is.
If I, if, if I could, seven hundred and fifty was a, was a number we'd also tossed out. Seven hundred and fifty square feet is actually the threshold point for ADUs in which you're actually required to pay all of the applicable impact fees and everything. So there is something to be said about that threshold point in the, in the codes and recognized by the state as, as a threshold of some form. So that there, there is something to be said about that threshold just from existing law.
Got it. Okay. So.
Question?
One more, no question, sorry.
It's all right. I'm, I'm, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I'm trying to get it through my head. If I have a seven hundred and fifty or five hundred square foot remodel that includes only bedrooms, no bathrooms, a living space that doesn't have anything gas in it. And I have a gas kitchen, but I'm not remodeling in the, in the kitchen. This would require electrification of that kitchen because I'm remodeling the bedrooms and the living space.
No, it does not have to. What we're asking for is your direction on that, frankly.
Well, that, but John, that, that is the question, that's the point of the question.
That is the point of the question.
Yes, do you want to do that or not?
Yes, that's the point of the policy question is, if you're not touching gas appliances and you're doing a major remodel and everything, should you have to electrify completely or not? That's, that's really the question at hand and, 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 you know, that's where we are.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Roderick?
Yeah, so, um, I mean, say you're doing a couple of bedrooms. Um. So you're creating space for more people, you may have to upgrade your water heater. If you're creating, you know, a bigger home for more people, you might have to upgrade your water heater. In that case, you probably want to do at least an upgrade of your, you know, your water heating system. Right? Rather than allowing people to like buy a new gas water heater to support, you know, more people in the house.
The, the mayor also, also spoke to this issue, and I think others have as well, is that those rooms will have to have heating minimum in them, and they will have to be vented, and they will have to connect to whatever heating apparatus is used, which could be gas, it could be electric. But this becomes the question, too, is putting bedrooms and basically adding to your connections to your existing gas furnace, would that require conversion to electric? That, you know, that, that's, that's the, you know, that's the nuance and level that we're dealing with at this point. On it, the, the, you know, if you're, you know, the frankly, the easiest, somewhat the easiest answer, obviously, is not, you know, is is, is to say, if you're not touching the gas, then, then we're not going to require anything. That's kind of level one is the option. Level two would be if you're not, you're, you're doing a major remodel, we're gonna at least ask you to re, to pre-wire and make it ready for electrification at some point in the future. And the, and the, and the next level or next level higher than that, I'll go that direction. Basically says, hey, if you're doing a major remodel, you're in a major investment. Now is the time to do these improvements and make this big statement and deal with that. Or you can choose not to do the remodel or size your remodel down a little bit and not hit the threshold. So that's really the kind of the three levels that we're, that we're dealing with, and we need clarity on where, where the council's landing on this. And we may not be able to get there tonight. We understand that. We may, you know, but at least we're, we're having a good conversation about it.
All right, so should we take a shot at my number five? And remember, we still haven't even gotten to timing, whatever we sort of decide on, on this top box, okay? So number five, I'll go to the other side, Councilmember Rarback will start.
I think it's time that we really have to commit, and I'm in favor of electrifying if we have a major remodel, period.
Okay.
And did you have, just curious, any definition of which number constitutes major remodel?
I'm, I'm not sure, honestly.
All right, we don't have to decide now, just curious. I'll ask each person, Councilmember Penrose?
I'm also saying yes, and I also don't know whether five hundred or seven hundred and fifty square feet makes sense. So I'm with Councilmember Rarback.
Councilmember Jimenez?
I wanna say no. Somebody, the remodels are to the, to the bedrooms, you don't need to touch the kitchen. There is, is gas, so I'm gonna say no.
Councilmember Roderick?
Yes, I'm gonna say yes and support seven hundred and fifty square feet.
I will. I'll say yes at seven hundred and fifty square feet.
Okay. So the next question.
That to, I'm gonna say yes to five hundred square feet.
Okay.
And, and remember, we're gonna take public comment hopefully shortly, and then you're gonna be able to come back to this. So you're not locked in to what you say. This is a, a guide to get there. So you have a second chance at this, and you have a third chance at it.
So the next question, so we, we're, we're on the fly, we're making, we're, we're making this better. So based on your conversations, you know, we're, we're, you know, there is, so what, what is this gonna be?
So this, so this, I think, is just a question for Councilmember Jimenez, because he was the only one who voted no, and the other two are.
Well, no, 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 take the reds off, because we still have to get to this level of detail, sorry. Go, bear with me, bear with me. Then it applies. So, so I want to be clear that this is fully electr, what you, what the greens are, fully electrify everything regardless of whether you're touching or not, right? Is that what everybody agreed to?
Yeah, they've, they've gone, the votes went beyond pre-wire.
Okay, it was fully electrified. Okay, sorry. That's why you're, that's, that's why I have to be corrected.
You know what? I gotta change, I'm gonna change.
Yeah, I wasn't sure that you were, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, I'm gonna change, yeah, I'll change that to a no at this point.
Okay.
Because you're right.
Sorry, I just wasn't sure.
No, that's okay.
Sure whether I.
Because I realize, because we really haven't talked about the cost of fully.
Yeah.
Electrifying, including appliances, including wiring, including the panel.
Yeah.
And that could start getting costs.
So for those particularly, I think what Veronica was saying, for those that voted no on not the fully, perhaps it would be good to know where you guys, where you two are landing with regard to the, say, line six, which is, are you okay with the pre-wire aspect of that if they're doing a major remodel? Could you live with that?
Right.
And that's really for the two noes on the fully electrify if you have a remodel.
All right, well, to be fair, I'll start on my side this time. I would say yes at seven hundred and fifty square feet.
Okay.
For pre-wire.
For pre-wire.
For pre-wire, right.
At seven hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
And then Councilmember Jimenez?
Yeah, I would go yes on the seven hundred and fifty as well for the pre-wire.
Okay. And then what I'm, what I'm, I, I won't speak for you, what we would say with those would be red for the only if gas appliances, because you've already said, is you're okay with the pre-wire? Or do you still want to weigh in on, on only if gas, if touching the gas appliances, would they have to electrify? So there's a, actually, there's a question there, but we can come back to that one. Let's, let's leave that one blank for right now.
Yeah, let's move on. Yeah, move on, John.
Thanks, Bob. Um, so commercial is a, is a simple, is, is, it seems like a simple question, but again, it's really based on the question of, does new construction or new major remodel constitute basically the same as a new TI? So new tenant improvements. If somebody goes into a spot over in, over in the, in the shopping center, and it was never, it was never a restaurant, and they're going in and they're dealing with this, and they want to go in with the commercial, they want to put in a gas, and everything like that deal. Does the major remodel apply to commercial in that regard, just as a tenant improvement? Does that constitute a major remodel if somebody's coming in? Because it's not new construction, and this is the distinction. New construction is basically new walls. This is basically a new tenant improvement or expanded tenant improvement. This is basically a new tenant improvement or expanded tenant improvement. One of the scenarios that plays out is is someone is basically expanding in and leasing 500 square feet or 750 square feet next to them and adding to their existing area. And this mostly would would apply to to restaurants, but it could apply to other uses as well.
All right. Okay, I'll start with me again. I'll say yes, and then there's the timing, and that then we'll figure out the timing underneath, correct, correct?
Yes, that's the idea. Yeah.
Councilmember ready?
Um, so how does that work? If say you're like in a shopping center, you know, like a strip center, and, um, you know, the building is designed, you know, for the entire square footage of that center. How do you like, say, you're just like doing one business in that center? How does that work? You know, if you've got.
Most of the centers are designed, if here and everywhere, uh, most of them have individual gas and electric meters. They aren't, they aren't singular. Some of the office buildings are a little different than that, but basically the commercial retail that you see basically all have individual metering, um, for the most part, they can be, they can be centralized, but for the most part, they are. It that's an enforcement and a compliance issue. The issue that we have is that virtually everybody coming in for commercial has to get a permit because they have to have a commercial contractor. So this is not so much of an issue about enforcement or compliance. It's just about a policy issue, whether we want to apply it to a tenant improvement or not. And then when.
And just by way of example, if I can give an example, John, because I I heard you, yeah, I wasn't clear on your example, but as I understand it, a rest, if a restaurant leaves a space and and they had gas, and if and and if a new restaurant moves in, this would trigger it. So the question is, if that new restaurant comes in and remodels the space for their new restaurant, new look, new everything, do they have to take the gas out at that point?
Yeah.
Even if they had gas before, that's the question. That's the question of, that's the best example is because I think restaurants are the best example of where someone would, we understand you would, you would, you know, they would feel, you would feel it.
So I guess for the time being, I'm just a maybe.
Okay, fair enough.
Thank you. Councilmember Jimenez?
I'd be a no.
Thank you. Councilmember Penrose?
I'm voting yes on that. I don't think there's any good reason, especially in the case that Bob spoke about with an old restaurant being occupied by a new tenants who want to run as a a new restaurant, that's opening a new restaurant using gas. I don't, I don't get it. And so I I would say yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, I don't think we'll go, uh, we won't go to to nine. So then the question being on these these things that we're really dealing with is is the timing. Um, and this gets back to where we talked about timing before, which is that do we want these all applying effective immediately with the ordinance, or do you wish to look at any kind of of delay in the in the implementation of these and give folks a little, um, maybe a little warning and pre-planning for that deal? So that's all this is implying. Um, and again, that that's where we are. So really, it deals with the, if you're talking about commercial, we're talking about the tenant improvements, and if you're talking about residential, you're talking about the additions and somewhere between 500 and 750 square feet for a major addition.
Got it. So if you say yes on any of line 10, that precludes any conversation on lines 11 and 12, correct?
Correct.
Yes, which if it's easier, you can discuss the timing altogether. So you can say immediately, or you could say, I would like to delay residential until 2025. I don't think we need to go through each line separately unless
Yeah.
the preference.
You could take them all three as a grouping.
And just say, what do you want the timing to be? I will figure out how to put it on the table.
Yeah.
Great. Councilmember Rarback, do you have a question or just?
Yeah, i- if we allow a delay, it worries me that all of a sudden, everybody who wants or even contemplating a remodel is going to say, I got to do it now. And that's kind of defeat the purpose of having electrification. So that's why my personal opinion is that it should be done immediately, so as we don't encourage more people sticking with gas, which is bad for many ways.
So, great. Well, looks like your your vote was already put down, so we'll start from the right and go left. Had to jump the gun a little there.
Try to help.
That was just a clar, that was a clarifying question. Yay.
You can always change your mind. If I put something up here that you don't agree with, just tell me.
You know what? Since we're going to get crazier, I'll go to the left, because I didn't intend that to happen, and I'll just say, I'm for both residential and commercial at this point, I would want to delay both till 2025. Because again, I still just feel I need more information and what these really costs look like and what the particulars are and the different examples. And so, yeah, I will, I'd like more time for folks to and and really to get a better handle on where people can get rebates or not, because I don't think that was quite clear from our last conversation of how big those rebates are and who, how many people actually be able to get them. So to offset costs for those who might not be able to afford it right away. Okay, Councilmember ready?
Yeah, I I by immediately, do you mean like Jan 1 of 2020?
Upon effective date of the ordinance.
So I would say, um, I would say yes for residential, and the reason is people are remodeling like crazy now. You know, a lot of work is is underway, and that will probably continue, because I'm guessing, you know, COVID will keep us at home probably for, you know, several more months. So as long as, you know, the, a lot of work is getting done now, I I would say effective, you know, immediately. But I'm I'm sticking to the 750.
Okay.
Um, with commercial, I'd be willing to postpone till 2025.
And I have to ask the question, again, we've talked about exemption, we've talked about the deal with with the greenhouses. We would work on all of that issue based on your prior discussion on greenhouses.
Yeah.
And that would also cover major remodels, too, and we took, we cover all of that. Okay, thank you.
That includes ADUs, by the way, so someone adds an ADU of 750 feet, they'll have to electrify their entire house if the rest, if the pre-existing is gas.
If it it, well, that's the depend about, let's not, we'll talk about the existing draft ordinance. What what you're saying right now is if you're adding on, then you're then then you're going to do that. If you're building a new one, that would be new construction. If you're adding to it square footage and and it constitutes a major remodel, that would be electrified. If you're doing a junior, which is an interior remodel over that, then it would not necessarily kick in. It would be based on the square footage you're dealing with. So again, your threshold is the 500 or 750, whatever the number we're landing on for that, the junior would also be subject to that. So.
But a detached, a detached ADU is considered new construction.
New construction.
So yes, on the ADU, but it doesn't trigger your house if it's detached.
Got it. Okay, good. Okay, just wanted to clarify that, because a lot of people I know think that they do, so, great. Councilmember Jimenez?
Would I say a delay, uh, 2030?
For which one?
Residential and commercial.
Oh, good. It's a member Penrose.
I I would in in as policy like to go along with Councilmember Rarback and say effective immediately, however, my one thought was if somebody has just put a lot of money into plans and permits for renovation that they're going to be starting soon, um, I don't want to penalize them and make them redo it. So I would put a a delay in for anything that is current. Um, but everything else would be effective immediately. Can you figure out how how to do that?
So we'll we'll think about that one during the break.
I'll I'll make it, I'll at least put this out there. If someone has applied for and received their building permits, they can still continue on and would not be subject to having to retroactively change their permits if that makes you feel any more comfortable with it.
Uh, that's that's one part of it, but I think sometimes people spend a lot of money on architects and on plans and things before they go applying for their permit.
All right, understood. And we have had folks that have asked the question who are in that process.
So maybe for, you know, maybe, uh, instead of saying effective immediately, say effective in 2023.
One year.
So just put it so.
One year from the, one year from the enactment of the ordinance. Whatever that might be. So
For both.
2022, 23.
Okay. Or both.
And we'll definitely have to add some asterisks in here. So that example just came up. So for detached detached, uh, new construction would not trigger anything for the existing house, you know.
We're 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 clear about that. And when the ordinance comes back, it'll be written in a way that makes that really clear.
Well, also for the public, just to follow through on, yeah, follow what we're saying. Okay, great. All right. So we finished table one and two, yes?
Yes.
Okay. So as promised, this would be now a time for public comment on what they've heard so far. And I feel like we've given folks a lot of things to think about and comment. And it really helps us the more specific you can get about some of the stuff that we've just discussed, to get input from the public on. So, so great. Shall we open up public comment? Each person will have, yeah, so this is how we do public comment for those who might just be joining us for the first time. If you look on the bottom of your screen and see participants, you'll click on participants, and when you see your name, you will see the opportunity to click on the raise your hand symbol. And we will see how many people want to comment, and you'll have two minutes each.
So. Okay, first speaker is Judy Taylor. Judy, you have two minutes.
Hi, I'm really glad I'm not on the screen right now. Um, okay, several comments. When you talk a clarity point, when you talk about 500 to 750 square feet, are you talking about additions or remodels and additions? Both? Okay.
Okay.
Um, the way many homes are built now with cores, uh, you can put your entire kitchen in both bathrooms and laundry within 300 square feet. So you're going to need to want to have some other matrix besides simply that square footage. Um, in terms of actual costs, when you submit permits to the city for remodels and new construction, you guys have got detailed plans. It should be very easy for you to pull out five of those plans and look at them and say, what would be the impact if this ordinance were in effect today? And you need to do that for residential and for commercial, so that you know what the real costs would be in our community right here today. Uh, one of the things you have to be aware of is the more stringent the ordinance is, the more likely you're going to be seeing weekend swap-out projects. Have you talked to the laundromats about what would happen if they had to go all electric right now? I'm glad to see that there's consideration for a couple of years, because right now it is impossible to even get permit, you know, to even get plans done. And the delay and the increase in costs, adding 10, 20, $30,000 to opening a new restaurant or doing that remodel will kill projects. So just be aware, there's no sanguine territory in all of this. And again, I have to say, when you're looking at something major like this, it's good that people like me will sit at home on a Tuesday night for, you know, an hour and a half, two hours to participate in this. But a lot of the people you need to hear from, the HOAs, the the small apartment owners, you need to go out and find them and talk to them. We can't have ordinances that make life difficult in ways that we can't even anticipate without reaching out to them to get that information, like pulling teeth if we have to. But please, talk to those other people before you go much further with this. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Next is Timothy Pond. Tim, you have two minutes.
Uh, hi, my name's Tim Pond. I do residential design and build. Um, I think that you could actually put a permit application date. If the permit's applied for, it should be grandfathered in. New permits with electrification, I think, is is easily doable in kitchen remodels. The panel upgrade that's necessary for that is something that's undertaken on many houses anyway. And I put electric heat in all my projects now, including in in the county, because it's required, but the cost of getting gas in from the street to a new project is astronomical. It's 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 as much as electric heat costs for the for the cost of that, you're offset, and your electric heat will be cheaper because it's far more efficient with the heat pump systems out today. We have a crisis in the climate, and we have to address it with drastic means, but there are some inputs that are necessary to protect poorer people, economically disadvantaged peoples and apartment holders, like Judy pointed out. And there are other ways to offset the carbon footprint. But overall, I think if you're doing a kitchen remodel, the pre-wire should be immediately implemented. The pre-wire, it makes total sense. It's already in the California Electric Code that you have to pre-wire for new appliances. I don't think, I don't think, if you're not aware of that, then I think the California Electric Code says if you install a dryer or a stove right now, you have to pre-wire. There's not even, that's in the code. So I think that the policy should be implemented as soon as possible. And, you know, the the price, and there's other carbon efficient things that the city could do, too, beyond this. But anyway, thanks for my ability to talk. I'm just coming for the next meeting, really, but I thought I'd show up early and give my two cents.
Thank you, Tim.
Thanks, Tim. Uh, next we have Tom. Come by, Tom, you have two minutes. Tom, you're muted.
You can come back.
Um, Manette, you have two minutes.
Hi there. Um, thanks for giving me a chance to talk. I appreciate it. I I'm not sure of this, but I might have built the first fully electric new home in Half Moon Bay. At least I had to fight real hard to get a permit to build this house at all. Um, and the reason I had to fight real hard to get that permit was because if you really want to build a fully electric house, you may blow up the Title 24 calculator in California, which is required by law for for both new homes and also certain remodels. So I think as you look at the costs, and I appreciate that Mayor Brownstone was asking about the costs in some of the previous discussion. I think as you look at the costs, you need to look if you're really going to require this at all of the costs, because it might include, um, having to, for example, generate extra power, or else you're going to be paying a boatload to PG and A. I am happy to follow up with anybody interested and provide more detail on what I did here. I emailed you guys as well. I think requiring it for new construction is a great idea. Obviously, I did it for mine. I'm all for it. I think, as was pointed out by Tim a few minutes ago, I'm very concerned with some of the discussion here about requiring it for certain remodels of 500 square feet and all that. I think for people who don't have the funds to do what I was lucky enough to do here, I think that's a real concern from my perspective. Um, I think for people who don't have the funds to do what I was lucky enough to do here, I think that's a real concern from my perspective. Um, so I've got tons of data on what it truly costs to do this and it's a lot more than ten thousand dollars. Um, so happy to talk to anybody interested if you want to hear more from me. Um, thank you very much. I don't need the full two minutes. Thanks for listening.
Thank you.
And next we have Bruce Nagel. Bruce, you have two minutes.
Thank you. First off, uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I think you had two interesting speakers uh, who came before and Tom Kabat is going to mention some things as well. There are some devices that exist today that allow you to lower the amount of energy that you require. There's one that's called the dryer buddy. What it does, it plugs into a dryer socket. You can plug in an EV into to it in either the dryer or the um, uh, charging continues. So you can do things to smartly use the energy that is in the building. So one I would suggest that you look at that and Tom should probably talk more about that. Um, if you're getting data from these people, it'd be interesting to have a lot of people look at that because you know, we all need to get smart enough to do this. We all need note, we all know we need to make this um, the way we do business now and we've got to figure out how to make it work. And there are ways to do it and we need to plunge ahead with that. And I appreciate the fact that the this board is looking at those things and then trying to determine what is going to make sense so that we, we have a future for our children. It's, it's, yeah, it's for us now, but if we think about this, the uh, the future doesn't look too bright unless we knuckle down and do the hard work that we're doing. And I thank you guys for tackling it.
Thank you.
Next is Karen Wang. Karen, you have two minutes.
Hi, um, thanks for taking my comment. I just wanted to say that I um, am in support of the major remodel. Uh, trigger for electrification. Um, I did a major remodel and um, we triggered, triggered the fire sprinkler requirement, which I think is a percentage is fifty percent, but um, I kind of think about this um, similarly, you know, that if you have the money and wherewithal to make such a major investment that you know, one of your first priorities should be um, your impact on climate change. And the future for our children. So um, I am in support of that. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's the end of our speakers, correct?
Yes.
All right, we will now officially close our comment portion. And thank you very much for members of the public. You've all given us some interesting information and thank you for volunteering to provide more information on costs, et cetera, and new kinds of modifications that might be available. All right. So are we um, ready for table, take a shot at table three? Good, I can see the excitement. Let's look at table three.
Go to table three. Yeah, well, thank you.
No one said this would be easy when we're getting into it. So this is good.
No, we'll um, ultimately what we'll like to do is come back, um, you know, and, and just reassess where some of those issues, but I think it's um, good to go forward. And again, hitting on and taking and from where we've been. So the next issue line five, six, seven uh, really hits on the minor remodels. Um, and uh, honestly, those are basically remodels less than whatever you ultimately land on establishes a major remodel. And this gets that same question we were having the discussion about before, which is um, full electrification, including the appliances, one option. That's, that's, that's the, the top side of this. The other is requiring the pre-wire only. Or um, you know, you could also take the position that we're just not going to, um, you know, that we only, that we only require electrification where they're involving the appliances that uh, in the, in the, in the minor remodel. So that's really a third nuance to that. Can you add that in there?
Well, the minor remodel is a remodel of any foreign area that contains a gas appliance.
Oh, the gas appliance. Sorry, I totally, I'm not reading my own footnotes here.
And then when we get to the next one, we're just talking about the individual replacement of the appliance.
There you go.
Minor remodel is if you're doing a remodel in an area of any size that contains a gas appliance. And then the next step after that, we're going to go to the replacement of the appliances. So the first question we're asking is anytime you have a remodel of any size that touches a gas appliance, do you want to require full electrification? Or which includes replacing the appliance or pre-wire only? And you can say no to both of these if that's your opinion as well. It's not either or. It could be either one or neither.
It's full electrification of the whole house.
No, if this is a full electrification of that.
Just as a remodel.
Of that system and the remodel. So if you're, if you're doing a, if you're doing a minor remodel, but it includes the entirety of the kitchen, then you would electrify the entire kitchen in essence is what, is what this would say if you choose um, line six and say, that's what we want to do.
Right. So six is assuming you have a gas appliance, you remove it, it's a new one. A new electric appliance is added. The pre-wire would mean you could still continue to use that gas appliance until it reaches the end of its useful life. And then at the point of, well, if you say at the point of replacement, the next one then. Uh, but at least it would be set up then for electrification when the time comes.
Got it. All right, I'll start on the other end this time. Council member. You know, actually I'll start in the middle. I'll shake it up. We'll make it different here. Council member Jimenez.
I would say, uh, no and uh, yes for the rewire. Uh, pre-wire only.
Okay. Um, council member, right.
Um, I'll agree with uh, council member Jimenez.
Okay, thank you. Likewise, I'll agree with council members Roderick and Jimenez. And then we'll move to council member Penrose, please.
Yeah, a clarifying question. I have a minor remodel. I'm doing my kitchen and it's uh, two hundred square feet. And I've got a brand new um, gas stove in there. Um, does full electrification mean I'd have to buy a new non-gas stove?
Yes.
Yes. So the, the, the other, the three council members have said no to that and yes to pre-wire only. So when you, when that stove wore out or you wanted to change it out, you'd go electric at that point.
Okay, great.
Wiring in place.
Great. So I'm going uh, no on full electrification and yes on pre-wire.
Great.
Great, thank you. Council member Robert?
Uh, yes, on full electrification.
Okay. All right.
So the next, um, the next section really is um, hitting into the issue of of um, the burnout. We talked about this um, in February back um, when we were talking about the ordinance and the idea with that one is, is that is that you would replace a gas appliance when they ran at, ran through their uh, life cycle. Or they were chosen to be removed by the owner, um, in essence, in a burnout mode with that. So obviously the first, the first line there is, is that you could apply that and say, yes, we think that if you've got, you know, we think that any one of these systems and appliances should be replaced with electric if and when they burn out or they're voluntarily replaced by the homeowner just out of desire to upgrade and change their deal. We have then below that grouped all of these things realizing that, that there's probably some, there might be variation and variability in people's thoughts. When we came to you last, uh, two weeks ago, the last meeting, we indicated and in the staff report and presentation, we talk about the biggest bang for your buck in greenhouse gas reduction is through water heating and the HVAC and air conditioning piece to this. Those are the two largest components to the building energy uh, side of things. Um, so if that helps at all in terms of any of your decision making going, but um, obviously with each of you, you may have a very different list. And so we can write down that list as you go, if you want to do this at all and this, um, you know, this is again, that chat, that question about um, are we going to implement a burnout ordinance?
Any questions, council member?
Yeah, I, I just heard a story from a coast side resident that I thought it was worth just talking about a little bit. So she said, um, they had some damage in their kitchen because of an accident. And so they remodeled their kitchen and they put in like nice new gas appliances. And then they were talking about solar and they decided to get solar. But then they realized that the solar was not going to be, you know, after they did it in, it's not really an efficient, uh, inefficient investment, cost effective because they have gas appliances. So if you're thinking of going solar, you know, you want electrical phones. So that's, that's where you're going to get the biggest bang for your buck. So um, you know, I, I just thought that was a good story because that's an easy thing to make because you're looking at things on a silo basis, right? So you want to look ahead.
Yep.
Got it. Any other clarifying questions? Okay.
Yeah, uh.
Yeah, sorry, council member Jimenez.
So what, do we have to decide uh, which of these uh, appliances uh, they have, you have to be replaced uh, for like, for electrical? Or was one at a time or how is that going to happen?
The, the idea was if you, if there was consensus on all, then you wouldn't have to go through them individually.
And again, the answer could be all and then, or some iteration of some appliance, or it could be no for both.
No for all of them, you know, and just like, we're not going to do a burnout.
Right.
Um, which puts us in an, which would mean in that case that only new construction would be electrifying and major remodels and minor and major remodels would be the only ones electrifying. And that, in that instance, as you, you would not deal with any of those, those things um, as they, as they burn out.
Thank you for clarifying.
We, I, if I'm, I, I'll, I'll add more, you know, probably not good to it, but um, part of the question that came up, Judy, Judy raised this question, I think about permitting and what doesn't get permitted, or maybe someone else did from the audience, but, but someone raised a question about permits and and that's a legitimate question. Um, I think in your prior staff report, we talked about the fact that residential permits for water heaters, for example, is about ten percent of all the water heaters installed um, ultimately get permits. So there are questions, challenges, issues with regard to the effectiveness of any of this. Um, but on the other side of it is that there's a huge number of these, you know, these systems that will not get replaced if we um, don't start somewhere. And again, the timing is maybe part of the question that has to be, you know, sort of said. Obviously for us, the issue that we're asking for ultimately here is what's the timing of this? So you could say all, but you could delay till twenty twenty-five, for example, and say, okay, we're not going to implement this immediately or twenty twenty-three or twenty thirty or whatever. So the timing does play into this too. So you have a chance to weigh in on both the philosophical issue of whether burnout ordinance is the right way to go. And if you agree that burnout ordinance should be there, but it might need a little bit of time to kick in, then the timing below gives you an opportunity to weigh in on that too.
So I'll start with me. I'll say no on water heating and no um, cooking. Yes, on everything else.
No water and no cooking.
Right.
Yes, all.
So space heating, closed drying, fireplace, or I guess, I guess no is probably the easier. More cooking.
Okay. Okay. And we'll do a wrap on that one.
Yeah, I'm going to do that as, as a yes, but there's more clarification in.
Okay. It's kind of a striped yes.
Yeah.
Council member Roderick?
I'm not sure I follow. So you don't want to require burnout for water heating?
Not at this point.
I'm going to say all.
Council member Jimenez.
Want to go uh, no or no?
Okay.
Council member Penrose.
Yes, on all.
Council member Robert?
Yes, on all, but uh, not implemented until twenty twenty-three.
Got it. Okay, well done.
I, I will support council member Rarbock on that.
Sorry?
I will support council member Rarbock on twenty twenty-three.
I will as well.
Okay. Great, thank you. All right, should we take a look at exemptions?
So the que, I, I'll ask you, Robert, are you okay with twenty twenty-three for the ones you support? So we, we have consensus on twenty twenty-three or?
Nah, I'd probably go for twenty twenty-five.
Okay, we'll put that. Thank you. Just, just trying to.
No, I'm glad you asked.
Yeah, where we are.
All right.
So um, one of the things that, that, that comes up and it's a, I, we think it's a very legitimate question, um, which is kind of this issue of equity and, and in, and social justice and impact to those um, less among us in terms of their, their ability to pay for improvements and things of that nature. So um, one of the things that we were tasked to do is to look at what some of the options are out there. And uh, clearly um, we've identified a couple of options that go beyond the issue of, of, of financial incentives of any kind or, you know, things that are out there based PG and E, PCE. One of those would be to uh, to, you could exempt existing deed restricted affordable housing. And again, that could be till twenty forty-five, that could be to twenty thirty-five, it could be to a, a certain date. Uh, obviously with that, but in that regard, that would be um, the, the senior housing um, on Main Street, the Main Street apartments, anything that has a deed restricted affordable. The units that you recently approved um, in the Affordable Housing Agreement for Creekside, for example. Um, you know, there, you know, theoretically, but those would actually be new construction be required to be electrified. So there's all these nuanced stuff. But that's, that would be the first place that we would say if you want to um, you know, provide some opportunities, that would be an exemption and it's consistent with a lot of what other agencies are doing. The second piece of this is that, um, that we would um, say that, that some of the agencies have also gone to the PGE cares list and said, okay, we will look at exempting particularly the homeowners that are in the PG and E, PG care program, which is basically a reduced a low income, lower income um, assistance from PG and E. Um, which the good thing about using the PG and E care system, for example, is that they do all of the income verification stuff and we just say, okay, you're in the PG care, that's good enough for us. The issue is a little um, more nuanced when you're talking about uh, for rentals and stuff and we would have to be looking through and what that means for that, but this would be a starting point to say, um, so what we're really asking for is, is your direction and thoughts and ideas on whether there should be exemptions for certain um, situations, namely um, the more affordable housing issues and, and those with least affordability.
Okay, I'm gonna move this along and we'll probably delay our beginning of our next general council meeting. So council member Roderick, did you have a clarifying question? Oh, you just had your hand up. Okay, great, thank you. So um, uh, I'll start on my side. I'll say yes for all the exemptions. And there might be others that will have to get identified, so.
Um, I'm going to. Um, I'm going to support for existing deed restricted affordable housing. I'm going to say a 2027, you know, five years. Because I think that, you know, the state and the federal government, at least the state, you know, will be, you know, catching up with local governments in terms of assistance for, you know, low income and people living in below market rate housing. And so, you know, we want time to, you know, put together programs and, you know, identify funding, you know, to help them. The reason is, you know, the cost of electricity is going to continue to, you know, go, it's, it's going to go down as we move into more renewable, you know, generation. And we don't want, you know, folks living in low income folks or people living in deed restricted housing, you know, to not benefit from the economies of scale, what'll happen as we move, as we start retrofitting our, you know, energy infrastructure. So I'd like to give a delay for five years and, and, you know, hopefully that'll give us time that, you know, you know, put together, you know, programs, you know, and leverage outside funding to help make that work for them too. They should be able to benefit from, you know, these policies as well. And PG&E care customers, yeah, you know, sort of right away. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Jimenez.
I would say yes. And, but I will go to 2030. I think I'll give a few more years to go to 2030.
Thank you. Councilmember Penrose.
I, I don't think I understand the delay fully. My sense is that they ought to be exempt and that if it becomes more affordable for them to go electric, then they would go electric. I don't, I don't quite understand the.
Can I, yeah, can I take a whack at that one if I, mayor? What, what is being, what, what is being suggested is in the marketplace as, as electric changes and we add more electric and we use more electric and we reduce gas, gas will go up in cost. So the cost per therm is going to flip flop between electric and gas. What I believe Councilmember Rutter was suggesting is, is that that's going to impact the tenant who is basically now paying more for their utilities because they're using gas. This is to encourage their owner to actually go forward and make the changes and deal with it. So everybody benefits from the, the flipping of the cost of power of electric and gas in the marketplace. And so they're not paying more than they have to. Otherwise, there's no incentive for the, for the owner itself to change out to, to electric.
Gotcha. So I would agree with, and I'm just assuming 2027 makes sense in terms of legislature changing or market changing or whatever. So yes, to both.
Councilmember Robert.
You know, there, PCE has a policy to give rebates to low income people. And we should encourage that, but I, in the spirit of comedy, I guess if we implemented the, or stopped the exemptions in, in 2027, that is okay with me.
And by the way, I meant to exempt PG&E care customers like my fellow council members. So I meant like, they should be exempt immediately, not be required immediately to.
It would be exempt until 2027.
Yeah.
Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, at this point, I would just do a time check. It's 6:57 and so you have a couple of choices here. You can go over, but I just wanted to remind the council that we have put a placeholder item on your regular agenda.
Yep.
It's, we don't have a lot of, a lot on the agenda tonight. I would guess that we would probably get to that item by maybe 8:30. And so this would also, you know, this is maybe a good place to do that. We do have to get through table four, which is commercial. But we also promised, you know, the chance to noodle on this. And it also gives Veronica and John some time during the regular meeting to kind of clean up the tables and then understand what questions still remain. And we also promised that we would go back to table one and two and allow you to deliberate a little bit more in the cases where maybe you weren't unanimous. Councilmember Jimenez made, didn't vote on a few things, for example. And I think it's fair that, that every council member has the opportunity to kind of say why they voted the way we, we did. So I would recommend we, unless you want to go longer right now, we take a pause and we can come back to this when it comes up.
I think after two hours, we could all use a 10 minute break because everybody agreed with that. Is that enough time? Yes. Okay, let's come back at 7:10. Thank you, everyone. Thanks for members of the public. Appreciate it.